Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the September 29th meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. Take a roll call, please.
Chair Hartzell?
Here.
Vice Chair Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
And Commissioner Nielsen is absent.
Okay, please join me in pledge allegiance. Well, tonight's agenda is a continuation of the meeting from last time to discuss an ordinance regarding the short-term rentals in the city of Woodland Park. As this is a continuation, we had public hearing at our last meeting. We will not be taking public comment at this since public comment was closed in previous part of us. So Karen, did you have any discussion?
I did want to go through a few things with you just to make sure everybody's on the same page and saw all the same revisions and such in the ordinance. Are you all right with the chair?
Very good.
Thank you. There weren't too many revisions that we were looking for and that we had clear direction from the commission in its entirety. But we did try to capture and incorporate all those into the ordinance. There was a couple that we missed, hence the re-release earlier this week. And it was reposted on the website. So at the bottom of the correct version that contains everything has a little note that says revised 9/25/2022 for anybody who downloaded that. So that should be the version everybody's looking at. As per your direction on page two, a definition of primary residence has been added. The definition, a short-term rental unit was modified to remove the word residential and add the phrase or a portion thereof. So in terms of what that you means, went through the ordinance and tried to make sure that where there was reference to the city and then we actually intended it to be that umbrella, the city clerk, that that's all been corrected. So you'll see that throughout the ordinance. On the same page towards the bottom, A2, that provision, we took care of the word beneficiary versus trustee in terms of a trust if the natural trustee of the trust is a natural person. On the next page, paragraph F, same correction around beneficiary versus trust. Paragraph G contains all of the revisions you guys had asked for with regard to the applicable zoning districts, where there being caps within the suburban residential, urban residential and PUD zones. And those rates remained unchanged at a percentage with suburban residential at 4%, urban residential 8%, PUD at 4%. I know during that meeting, there was talk about possibly putting hard numbers in there, but that from the staff understanding did not great gain or garner a true confirmation by the commission as a whole that that was the direction we wanted to go. So that's why the percentages are still reflected in the ordinance. And then at the end of that paragraph, it clearly states how they were, some districts were revised in terms of where they're prohibited, which is that multifamily suburban, multifamily urban, mobile home park, ag, public service power, public, yeah.
Public spaces.
Public lands, zone district, and then heavy service, commercial, light, industrial district. Paragraph H was modified to reflect provisions you want to related to the waiting list. And that being different dependent upon the zoning district, since there's caps associated by zoning district. It also clearly states that each such waiting list, applications for short-term rental units located in an owner's primary residence shall be given priority over short-term rentals, which are not the owner and applicant's primary residence, since that was a provision that was important. On paragraph I, there was a desire to modify that so that the availability of the local person servicing the the short-term rental unit, that that only needed to happen during periods of applicable occupancy for when they needed to be available that 24/7. So that has been changed and you'll see that during periods of applicable occupancy in the middle of that paragraph. On the next page, page four, paragraph L has been reworded. There's quite a few more words in there, but it clearly outlines the radius for the various separations by zone district with it being 500 feet in the suburban residential district and 250 within the urban residential and PUD zone districts. Paragraph N is new, and that was when you were requesting to have somebody, a provision for certain exemptions from the regulation, and that's a person renting or utilizing only a portion of a dwelling unit, which is their primary residence as it's defined in section 5.22.010, for furnishing lodging accommodations for periods of less than 30 consecutive days. And where the person owns and occupies the dwelling unit during the same periods as such rental or utilization of the dwelling unit shall not be subject to the provisions of this chapter. So that was clearly captured and set there. The next modification of substance, page six, towards the bottom, section four, we did have a more substantial typo where it listed short-term rental business twice. So we got that corrected so that that second definition really is for short-term rental unit. And then that definition was modified like it is under the licensing provisions to get rid of the word residential and add the phrase a portion or a portion thereof. On the next page, that contains the section of the table that would be added to the zoning use table in the code. And you can see the deletion of the permitted conditionally under the three zones, multifamily suburban, multifamily urban and mobile home park. So you've got consistency there with the earlier provisions in the ordinance. Towards the bottom, paragraph B1, the word rental was added. So short-term rental units are not permitted in a rental apartment unit or a rental apartment building at any time in any zoning district. On the next page, this is where we had a couple of revisions that are more detailed in terms of criteria that would be looked at by the planning and zoning office when evaluating when somebody meets the criteria to have a short-term rental license issued to them. So paragraph four, the maximum number of occupants permitted in a short-term rental shall be two people per legal bedroom plus an additional two people. Paragraph five was modified to be a little more encompassing. Says large events such as, but not limited to concerts, parties and weddings exceeding the maximum number of permitted occupants are prohibited. Paragraph six dives more in depth in regard to parking standards. So that all short-term rental units shall provide a minimum of two off-street onsite parking spaces for guest vehicles. And all short-term rental units with more than two bedrooms shall provide a total of one parking space per bedroom. Paragraph seven was in addition, just to make sure we're referencing the caps from the previous licensing section. So that the number of short-term rental units shall not exceed the established cap or applicable percentage of the total number of dwelling units within such zoning districts as established at 5.22. And then paragraph eight is the exact same language as it showed up on the licensing section with regard to measuring that distance or the separation between the dwelling units. Since that's a function that really happens within the the planning office, it would be very helpful if that was located in the standards that the planners would actually be looking at to perform that function. So that's why that was placed there. The paragraph under section seven was modified to be a little more explicit. So at the end, it talks about processing applications from current and valid business license holders operating a short-term rental business first before processing other short-term rental business license applications. So that's one of those transitional provisions. As we go from the the old system that had been in place to this one. And then under section eight, there's a little bit of clarification with regard to the time period stating that short-term rental business is licensed granted and application fees paid within the last three months of the year 2022 shall be effective until and through December 31st of 2023. Rather than somebody pulling a license in these last couple of months and then having to pull one again that started January. So that's a one-time transitional provision. So there's that. And then I did actually send you guys some additional information just to follow up on how the radii or the radius provision, what that looks like. You know, in terms of the properties and such, I apologize that I did not have that the last time. And Sarah, I'm going to share my screen. Yeah. Provided I can find what I did with that. Let's try this one. So what I have here is the the map back from May that you guys saw in one of our early joint work sessions with city council. Where based on the data available at that point, we mapped the location of a number of, well, the the short-term rentals that we had documented through the business licenses at that point in time. So that's what this particular map is. And it's definitely challenging since the dots are not very big. And it's also played out placed on the zoning district. So when we were talking about the size of lots, the radius that should be applied. I sent you guys just a quick summary around the data in the existing zoning ordinance that talks about minimum lot frontage. So when somebody's dividing a property today, any new piece of land that's being created needs to have at least 40 feet across the front that touches the street. And then there's different lot sizes and then a maximum density standard that gets applied with that subdivision. So the difference between urban residential versus suburban residential is 7,500 square feet in a more dense zone district versus 15,000 square feet for a minimum lot size in the suburban residential. And then the density is definitely greater in the urban residential with a maximum of two dwelling units per acre versus a suburban residential of only one dwelling unit per acre. Now, how that played out in practicality here within the city is kind of interesting. Because like down here in the Paradise subdivisions, the overall open space, I believe, was factored into to calculating that density. So while there are smaller lots, there's these larger tracts of open space in and around there, which is part of how the the density was reviewed. These lots are a little bit on the larger size compared to some of the older part of towns. And the smaller ones in this area, taking an old-fashioned scale to a paper map, look like they were coming in roughly at 120 by 220 feet minimum. So when you, right now, we've got a couple of places where you've got things that are clustered together. Like this little spot here in the the lower right or the right side of the screen. There's also a number of them up here in the the Forest Edge area where you've got a a number of short-term rentals in fairly close proximity to one another. So there's potential for some conflicts right now based on who has licenses and the applicable of that, of application of that that separation. Within the urban residential zone district, that's that darker yellow shade here, more in the center of the town. That's the older part of our community that dates back to probably the original town plot, which I'm not sure if the date was like truly 1890 or a little later. So well over a century ago. And things have definitely changed and modified. So you can see how those lots are somewhat irregular. Some of them are quite skinny. So I would say 50 feet in width, if not even down to that 40. They appear to be about 100 feet long. So an easier way to kind of like get a feel for what's going on in that area is I did measure, you know, blocks like over in this particular area. Hope you can see my cursor wiggling back and forth. And those appear to be about 300 by 350 feet, you know, in terms of the block size. And it's in this particular zone district that you currently have set up a 250-foot radius that would be measured from the property line of those lots. So the the dimensions you had in place as placeholders in the ordinance, I think, are reasonably accurate within the accessory dwelling unit provisions. Believe they were looking at three and 600-foot separations and like this whole other density calculation that happens around 80 years. So that's just kind of an aside. So where you guys were with short-term rentals, I think is is probably fairly fairly accurate. If this is still a tool you would like to apply. So that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you. I guess I'll proceed, I guess, go down and see what issues or should we go through the?
In there does that?
Okay. Why don't we take our opportunity, thanks for the members to?
Once there's police, one of us and see which paragraphs, if any, we have any issues with.
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead. So I am very pleased with the work we've done. I feel like this ordinance has all the tools in it to manage short-term rentals that I think are reasonable compromises between all the different groups that we heard public comment from. We have provisions that you have to follow guidelines and be a good neighbor. That will cause you to lose your short-term rental license if you're not following those provisions. So short-term rentals that exist today that cause problems will be removed in the future. We have capped with the percentages that we said that are basically will be no new short-term rentals added unless some short-term rentals go out of business. And at that point, they'll have to meet all the guidelines. Homeowners associations and all these other provisions still exist for covenants and things that can restrict them in neighborhoods. And just as we have to update our ordinance, homeowners associations may have to update their covenants to include short-term rentals because they didn't exist when they were created. So the ordinance in general covers everything very well, in my opinion. I'm very happy with it. The only provision that sets up for a complicated resolution is the distance limits between short-term rentals in paragraph 522020L and 187850B8. I feel that those are going to cause a random refusal to assign short-term rental licenses to existing short-term rentals in the future because of their distance between each other. And that will have to be managed by staff and it'll be complex. And it'll also open up additional short-term rental licenses when those are not authorized so that somebody could apply for one elsewhere. And it's going to basically create a a transition of, I think, based on my looking at the map, approximately 30 different new short-term rentals, which is not what we were necessarily setting out to do was to displace 30 existing and create 30 new ones. So if those two provisions were deleted, I would be extremely pleased and think that we have an ordinance if the city council could enact and it could allow the city and others to manage short-term rents. So that's just, those are my two paragraphs. Long comments.
While we go down, get the items over there. Let's discuss that. Let's pick this issue, the distance criteria. So I understand that by enforcing the distance criteria, whatever the magic foot distance is, and that's probably another discussion you need to have, that that distance needs to be. But by imposing the distance separation between existing. Yeah, who who comes first? You have three, three houses on a block because A, B, or C get the first priority, the other two go away.
Right.
So I understand that concern. I also support the distance separation so that we don't have large groupings of short-term rentals in one neighborhood, first one block. And I think dispersing them is the preferred distant or option. I know we have a clause in there, I believe, as far as providing existing units priority in the first two or three months to renew their licenses. So I would propose that both of those is that we put a same type of clause in there that for the first two or three months, applicants are not restricted by the distance, but in future development, any new licenses beyond the two months would have to be separated by the distance, whatever distance we determine or recommend. Any other comments?
Yes, I I would prefer to strike the distance requirement altogether because it is arbitrary. I know part of the objective was to disperse short-term rentals in some neighborhoods. But when I look at urban residential and the fact that it is primarily in an older section of town was with much smaller lots. And the short-term rentals that are that are there now, if you, and then I went ahead and did my own windshield tour since nobody wanted to come right along with me. Those are homes that probably will never be long-term rental, not all of them, but there's a large majority in the older sections of town that will never be long-term rentals. And when you look at some of the criteria that came up during the survey of what do you like about short-term rentals, what do you dislike? One of the things that people liked was the preservation of some of those older homes, the short-term rentals to basically be an endorsement for the city of Woodland Park and our and our history. By limiting the the distance from property line to property line, we will end up eliminating a lot of those older cabin short-term rentals in the older part of town. I don't have a problem with the distances in suburban residential that we've recommended because those are larger lots. It even saying that, looking at the the three that are clustered over there, I think off of King's Crown, probably will eliminate at least two of the three that were clustered together with that 500-foot limitation. But I'm more concerned about limiting those that are in the older part of town with much smaller lots. So I'd I'd like to strike the urban residential distance limitation and limit it only to suburban residential limits.
PUD too.
And PUD, yes. And PUDs are generally going to be reviewed individually. But certainly the 500 is not, 500 feet is not a terribly onerous requirement. It will, as I said, probably eliminate two out of the three over off of King's Crown. For a long time, I had a screensaver of the picture of the house with the car in the kitchen over off of King's Crown after the infamous short-term rental party that occurred over there. I'm sensitive to that. I'm a property owner as well. I mean, all of us are property owners, all of us live in this community and all of us have those same concerns. But I I think we're going to run into more obstacles by in placing that physical limitation in urban residential.
So that's for future development or future licenses sort of protecting the ability to have a block worth of?
Well, if you keep, if you keep the 500-foot limit in suburban residential, you will ultimately, it will ultimately result in dispersed short-term rentals on any given block or any, any given filing. I don't think that that's appropriate in urban residential specifically. I'm talking about the the older, smaller lots.
So does the urban residential have different neighborhood characteristics that suburban residential doesn't that we're trying to protect?
Well, I I I made that statement. I do, I believe we we do have a different character in those older sections of town with the cabins. And it's not only on the north side of 24, it's also on the south side. Those are dwellings that have been there, you know, a century or more, as close as we've got to the historical district. And they do serve a purpose as short, short-term rentals, but to say, okay, there may have been four on the south side of 24 in this particular neighborhood. I can't remember the name of that neighborhood right now, but guess what? Only one of you is going to get a license now because you're so close together. But when you talk about suburban residential, where you've got newer sections of town, larger lots, probably more expensive structures as well, I I don't have a problem with the physical limitations for suburban residential.
I have a question for us. Perhaps our city attorney can explain. As currently drafted, we have in a situation where we have two short, two existing short-term rentals that are same next door and very close to each other. As the ordinance is currently worded, who gets, who gets the permit going forward? Assuming both turn up at approximately same time at the clerk's office or is it a race to the office or what? How is it? How does it just, how does it, what is the effect of the current ordinance as drafted?
Yeah, I don't think there's a need to put, oh, put that in the ordinance. It would just be the order in which they came. But that that is a concern that, I guess, as you guys are deciding with, I guess, equity. I I imagine these applications are timestamped and or date stamped, Karen.
I said they happen in a different office.
Well, and and if I could continue my thought, I mean, it it's, as Commissioner Kennedy's already pointed out, we, with this ordinance, we have created a self-governing limitation on short-term rentals with our cap. And the caps occur in three districts. We've also created prohibition against short-term rentals in several zones within the city limits. I believe the cap serves the purpose of limiting short-term rentals without the cap or the physical limitation of the distance between short-term rentals. There is the auxiliary benefit of dispersing the short-term rentals. But I think by doing so, we create a bigger problem with equity, with determining who, as we just discussed, you know, who's going to camp out in the parking lot and get their application in first. I I I say that flippantly, but I'm I'm serious. It it is more arbitrary than our cap on percentages is. And the cap on percentages, I think, serves a purpose that that we were looking for, and that is a limitation on short-term rentals.
I'd like to add one other comment, a thought that by setting the distance limitation, you create an opportunity to sort of game the system. If you don't want a short-term rental next to you, the simplest way to do that is to apply for a short-term rental license. And there won't be one within 500 feet of your property.
Whether you use it or not.
Just get a license so that nobody will have one next to you. The distance thing does that. The cap and those other provisions don't create that gaming in the system. It doesn't create arbitrary stuff. It's just capped. You can't get one or you can, depending on if they're available or not. And you have to meet the other requirements of the code and the ordinance, which provides restrictions and limitations. So that's another thought that I wanted to bring up.
Well, again, the discussion seems to be to protect the existing short-term rentals. And if there's three on one block or moving way, that's why I think we should look at section seven on page eight. Talks about for the first two months.
We hear all the comments from all commissioners.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's all right.
So we give you the opportunity. Please, Larry.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Appreciate that. I think I I thought at our last meeting, we struck a reasonable compromise by saying 500 feet in suburban residential. And 250 in urban, which was proposed to be 500 for each one. So I thought that was a regional compromise that we reached at the last meeting. So I'm a little surprised we're talking about it here tonight. Also, I'll say that. The information that Carol provided us about a month and a half ago, the two publications. That were kind of model ordinances and what to do, what not to do, what should be included with that. Talked about both separation and the cap as being the two most effective tools of protecting neighborhood integrity, integrity and character. I personally live in a suburban residential district in back of me. And it was zoned just several years ago is urban residential, which pretty much doubled the density. And I. I I was concerned about that area in back of me, fulfilling with the character. It certainly hasn't been developed yet at this point, but at the same time. It it it's allowed to double the density of the area. Cut the lot size in half. I I think the 250 is a reasonable compromise, so. I support keeping the ordinance the way it's written right now. I like your idea, Ken, about maybe kind of phasing it into this two month process. That may be a a stopgap method in the meantime, but at the same time, I think we need both those, put the. Cap in the separation of requirements.
Can I? I think both the cap and the density restrictions serve an important purpose. In some ways. Density restriction more so than the cap in the cap is somewhat how many there are around, but what really matters is in any given neighborhood, what the impact is. And in one good given neighborhood is two or three and two or three in a row. That's a different, that's a different neighborhood than a residential neighborhood, it seems to me. So I mean, I I think the density restriction, they say, is more important in preserving. The resident, the residential, residential character now. As far as some transition, I can see that that makes sense. Exactly how that exactly how that works. I I hate to have people camp, you know, as we suggested out in the parking lot, waiting for the clerk's office to open in the morning. And it may maybe that for existing ones. And these will turn over. These will turn over from time to time. I don't want them to turn over. I don't want it to turn over and move next door, next door to another one and create the same problem in the next neighborhood over. If there's two or three together. As as each one leaves, then all that's left is all that's left ultimately is one. Yeah, we did discuss at one point also that suburban residential has a higher likelihood potentially. Of being not a cabin, but actual single family dwelling that would be able to be used as a long term rental.
Exactly.
Which is another thing that we heard from the public that they wanted. More available housing in terms of long term rental types and that sort of thing. So that could provide that impetus by keeping the. The distance restriction, which I'm not opposed to the distance restriction. I'm just saying that the way it's currently enacted creates this. Explosion of people getting out of the business that may or may not want to. It does create some. Properties that are not suitable for long term rentals, not being able to be suitable for short term rentals any longer either. So now they're just probably not going to be an investment. Nobody's going to keep them up. They could go deteriorate. I know some of the properties I've seen are actually getting refreshed and refurbished to make them rental property. And I think short term rentals are part of them. I don't know all of them, but I know some of them. Are owned by people who want to. Dress them up and not let them go. You know, these 90 year old cabins get a refresh if they can make money off of them, but they don't. If they're going to just sit there empty. So that's just another consideration. I don't know how we deal with it, but. That that that's basically all my comments.
If there's some grand, if there's a grandfathering approach, does that, does that.
That could.
Substantially reduce your concerns in this regard?
Yeah. I'm not opposed to the distance restriction in urban or suburban. It's just the way it's enacted right now. It creates this. You know, eject. All these people from short term rental business arbitrarily. Without determining that they may be a suitable short term rental because they're not suitable for anything else. They're not necessarily next to somebody or bothering a neighborhood. It's not suitable for long term rental, but they're ejected from the business. So now that property is going to be vacant. That that's a potential that the way we're doing it right now, I see happening, potentially to happen. And I don't know that that's a good or bad thing, but I would prefer if people are going to fix up properties and keep them nice looking. In these cabin areas, which are south of 24 in that urban residential zone, north of 24 off of 67. There's just several places where it's cabins. I don't know what else you could use those for, other than a short term rental.
Well, Larry, you you made a good point. Last week we had. Yeah, there you are. We talked about the distances last week and. 250 feet in the urban residential was. Perhaps arbitrary, and that's why I went back to staff this past week and said, tell me how big these lots are in the urban residential. And that's why we have the note from Karen about those lots in particular, the smaller lots that aren't. If if you talk about a 250 foot limitation, you're talking about. No. Short term, maybe one on the corner of the entire development and then none, no others because of that limitation. So I I even thought about, well, is there a a smaller distance that we could consider for urban residential? And since the lot fronts are 40 feet, correct?
Minimum. Another opportunity would be just to have a provision for an application to be reviewed. To see if they can get a variance from the distance separation. That's too complicated.
No. Okay. Well, what.
I'll defer to staff.
Well.
No variances. Variances are just a little less than right here. Variances is a relief foul for when somebody's not able to meet the established criteria. You don't set something up with a path to a variance.
Fair enough. Major. I'd like it better to be just.
Well, but I'll restate my. Question, or perhaps it's rhetorical. Is it possible that we have a smaller distance for urban residential than 250 feet? I think that that's that's too too much.
Well, with a 40 foot frontage minimum, that would be. At least six properties between. Few short term rentals.
Well, it's not going to be 40. I mean, that's that's the that's the minimum.
Right. So it's probably 60. It could be every four houses.
There are typical neighborhoods, new neighborhoods, we're looking at 100, 110 foot white lots. And 125 deep or whatever. So it's 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 not going to be meaning the minimum.
So however we do it to. Protect the neighborhoods, provide for single family housing that's affordable, any of those things I'm I'm in favor of. I just didn't want to. Trash things that aren't suitable for anything but short term rentals from being able to do short term rentals, but. That's, I don't know if we can do that.
Well, this, so with what we've crafted. A short term rental has to be residential, dwelling.
Yes.
So it first has to be a dwelling.
Yes.
And then it can be converted into a short term. So I don't think creating a short term would be would be.
No.
You're right.
So I I'm still going back to the more historical sections of town and very small lots. We are going to eliminate eliminate some of those short term rentals. And if that is our objective, then, you know, I'm not going to follow my sword on this, but I do want to recognize that there are. Property owners that have preserved these older cabins. And are just recently using them for short term rentals. And now we're telling them, well. No, can't do that anymore. Would they turn them into long term rentals? I couldn't say with any certainty, no or yes, but my guess is no. Because they're not suited for long term rentals. They're little 600, 700, 500 square foot cabins.
Well, what I would suggest then is if if that does become an issue and a problem, then we should re readdress what we.
Well, I what I'm suggesting now is that we decrease it from 250 to some lesser distance and I'm. I'm not smart enough to know what that might be. I only suggested that if the front was 40 feet, that possibly we say. 80 feet. Or 120.
We could take a proportional approach to the proportion for suburban residential. 500 feet will separate about three lots, probably. Maybe four. In some different areas.
A three lot.
That we could say whatever.
150.
Whatever a three lot would be, would be like 150 feet or something like that. Or 160 or something.
Can I just go back again and ask a question about some sort of grandfathering for those lots that are currently operated as short term rentals? As long, well, this is not grandfather that runs with the land. It runs with the ownership that we would not, we would allow. Would allow applicants to continue to renew. Notwithstanding, notwithstanding the density limitation.
Then we can enact the density.
If someone new came in, not previously been operating this way, the density limitation would apply to them.
And then and then it's in.
And if the density is an issue, it would be an issue on the good neighbor policy or other provisions that you could restrict them from getting a renewal of their license that way. Rather than just saying because you're within so many feet of another one.
Well, I'm saying, no, because you are with some, number, current owners would be fine, because they.
But if they transfer ownership.
On on transfer ownership.
Right.
Lee, I think I'd be okay with a grandfather clause, but I don't want it related to the use. I'd rather have it related to the owner.
Rather.
The owner, the the owner of the property.
Yeah, that's absolutely what he was saying too.
Yeah. And again, I we had, I don't think we can grandfather something that hasn't been legal before or.
Yeah, and I wasn't texting the grandfather. I said, I was trying to word it.
I make a suggestion that I think the chairman made is to include it in the section sevens, otherwise it's not in the code, so it's not confusing anybody. But we could include in that section seven or something similar that relates to those current. Licenses, because you would, I think you would want some, it goes back to someone who already has a business license with the city, otherwise. You don't want to talk about anybody else. So that way it's short term, it's in an ordinance, but it's not in the code. That's what I would recommend.
And if we do that, then are we in agreement that we keep the 250 and 500 foot limitations for any. Time ownership, ownership transfers. And and 250 is still okay with everyone in the smaller lots in the older part.
How many do you want on a block?
That that's fine.
Separated by six properties seems reasonable.
I mean, Karen, the reality is, is if we keep the cap, it's not going to happen.
Karen, didn't you say blocks were often 300 to 350?
Yeah, there are the couple that I was looking at that were really square.
Two 50s.
Reasonable.
Seems to fit with that.
Well, there's quite a few properties in a block. Let me show my screening in case.
Lots.
Let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. So here's Highway 24 or Arch 67 comes up down from there. So this yellow portion here, and then as you were saying, south of Highway 24, this yellow portion down here, that's that urban residential zone district. And it's really here on the northern side where things have been reconfigured over time, probably to accurately reflect. Where the the houses landed, because I imagine this was platted as part of like a railroad plot. So you had little 20 foot white lots or 25 foot. Little skinny lots and you put a house down in the middle and then people realize, oh crap, I'm on top of a property line. I own three of these. I want to make them go away. So anyhow, that's how you end up with all these odd sizes and shapes in there. So when you look at a block like this one here. And I'm circling around, you actually have, it looks like one, like five lots within that block. Some are quite large, some are smaller. When you go. Just a little further to the west, you know, you've got, it looks more like seven block or seven lots within a within a block. You know, it's just, it's just all over the place. So that's where the the 250 really almost gets you to like one per block. You know, when you start putting that radius as measured from the property lines and not where the house is sitting. So to your point, Carol, that something a little smaller may be more appropriate in this district. It 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 may be, you may find that more suitable, you may not, but it's just, it's it's just very different. As compared to when you get over here. Closer to the high school, there's a little bit newer development and those are very regular in size. And if I remember right from taking a scale to those, those were roughly, I'd want to say like 100 by 100. In terms of of the the size of a lot. So just to to kind of help with that, what you're struggling with in terms of what is the right number.
Well, you know, people call it the magic number, you know, where do you get it? You pull it on the air or whatever. But when we looked at the information that was provided us earlier, I think you provided a Ken, the listing of other communities and the requirements. 500, 250, those type of measurements showed up all the time. So maybe other communities have thought this out. And based on what they have processed in the past. We ought to try.
I I understand what you're saying, and I'm all about plagiarism and best practices. But this is Woodland Park and I'm looking at the map right now and those those extremely small lots with extremely small structures. To me, serve as a short term rental. I'd rather see them there than in a suburban residential, but. Part of our objective is to limit the number and disperse. The number. I'm just thinking that 250 feet is an undue requirement for urban residential and. That's why I asked for, tell me how big those lots are. And if the minimum frontage is 40 feet and you want to try to have. Three lots between houses, I would say 120 feet for urban residential and keep 500 in suburban residential. And add the clause to the section in the ordinance that talks about grandfathering in. Licenses for current owners.
A better way to process.
Processing, processing them first. Yeah, no grandfathering, sorry.
Sorry, I know that's a bad word.
This is where Nina comes in, but the way I was going to phrase it was, you know, existing licenses, so long as they're, you know, maintained. Not subject to the the distance separation requirement.
I was just going to say the restrictions in X and Y sections, the two places we talk about density shall not apply to. The current, current, in the same language I have in section seven, just another sentence, current business license. Valid business license holders operating a short term rental.
That allows a cap to serve the purpose of not having a bunch of new ones because we're not. Licensing the ones that are already existing and freeing up a bunch of licenses. So I think that's probably a good.
Frankly, that helps make me much more comfortable with the urban residential number. What almost whatever that number is, whether it's 125 or or 250. That we won't have. Dramatic disruptions, you know, all of a sudden. So I mean, I I'm comfortable with keeping the 250 number, but that's that's not what the consensus is. I I would like to be able to present a consensus.
I would too.
I'm comfortable with the distances as we prescribed at the last meeting.
I am too.
I'm not, but I don't, I'm not gonna.
It's not worth.
Arm wrestle or. Jello wrestle or whatever you want to do. No, no, but only if we keep, if we add the clause that. Gives some relief to. Current, you know, the existing licensees.
From that restriction on the first pass of that.
Well, that's certainly, that's certainly the the purpose of the. Youthworthy and grandfathering.
Yeah.
Legacy would be a nicer word, please.
What is it?
Legacy.
Legacy.
Legacy. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, our ultimately, our objective is to limit and disperse and. This does that.
Yep.
I think that's a good resolution and preserves, as I say, I think the density restriction is important.
So.
So what we're, you know, people have talked about there being an invasion of STRs. It's already, there's a number that are already in there, I think it's key that the cap helps stop it, it's not gonna, we're not get, we're not getting more. Um, you know, perhaps there's room in caps in some way to reduce it some, but um let's, let's not push it out of one neighborhood and push it into the next neighborhood.
Exactly, and uh the cap does restrict it from continuing and all the ordinance requirements do allow for removal of licenses for unsuitable STRs. So that will help. Um, so I'm I'm happy with the compromise that you suggested, which is Nina to add to section seven.
Yes, at the dead. All I'll say is the restrictions in those two sections shall not apply to the current business license holders operating a short term rental business, so that.
That's.
Perfect them. Please, and it's a legacy provision, not a grandfather.
Yeah.
Section seven has that two month uh application period, so would that apply as well?
Section seven is where it says that if they currently have um a valid business license operating a short term rental, they'll they'll be processed first. Then section eight says that they have a um, you know, the fees and the application for twenty twenty two shall be effective through the end of twenty twenty three.
So would this be a new section nine slipped in?
No, I think it should be such, I think it should be section seven, cause the section seven is called current business licensees operating short term rental businesses, and I think it should be. In the same section, that way it's, we know it's just about this like limited situation where.
Two month applies to the um, the if the cap is in place. And the opportunity, it'll process the.
In this context, it should be written so that it would also apply if somebody currently operating didn't make it in in the first two months. If they, if they turned up in March and says, I wanna go do it, sorry, out of luck.
That's fine.
Right now, that's in a tur- interpretation.
Very good, so it covers distances, you brought that up, Ken, any other sections that you have issues?
Nothing for me.
Or you have anything you'd like to?
I have a couple of things, but I don't wanna. I'm happy with the way organism is crafted right now.
You got a couple of things that need to be corrected, tell us now so we can.
No. I mean philosophically.
Well, one of them was the percentages for the the cap.
Yeah, you asked.
And I I I thought, well, why don't we just have a.
A number.
A number, it's a percentage, you know, make the accounting staff to keep track of that much easier for you just. Kind of look at those percentages.
Number for that percentage?
Well, Ken gave us.
It's on the, it's on the chart in the presentation that they gave us.
Larry, the percentage offers an opportunity.
Not have to change.
To be flexible, so as new units are built, it's just a percentage of those new units without assigning a number that we would have to change over and over and over.
That's a good point, so in a way, the percentage is a little bit less restrictive if we add units, but if. Units go away, it goes down to um. Yeah, so urban residential, there's forty at seven point two six, and I believe it would be forty four at eight percent. Or suburban residential seventy seven at four point seven six percent, so it goes down by eleven, I believe. Uh planned unit development is ten at three point two four percent, it's either adding zero or one. Depending on if you, what fraction, what you're gonna do with a fraction of a percent, but um it's like point six would be available in the planned unit development. So instead of ten, you'd have ten point six, if they went to four percent, which is what we said that, so I believe it's capped at four. So suburban's capped at four, that some are gonna go away and urban residential um. It rounded up to eight, uh that added four, but it could be seven point five if you want to cap it at zero. But it it that, that's what we discussed, that's what was in there. Um multifamily zero, so there's eleven that are existing that will go away.
And don't even go down that road, you guys are comfy.
Yeah.
Just stop it.
But I think that percentages offer more flexibility for the staff. Um, I would just ask that when the staff makes this presentation to the city council that. Provide a good explanation of where those percentages came from and it was basically. Based on the existing licensees at the time the moratorium was put in place. It it was a place to start and that some entity, I don't know if it's gonna be the department, the planning department or the city council. Can change those percentages up or down as time goes on. If if we've decided that.
It's difficult to reduce.
I do have.
We create people's, you know, an interest in a certain number.
I do have one other question, Nina. Um, where we've issued licenses for STRs within the city and there may be a homeowners association with covenants and restrictions. Um, because we heard from some of the public that we have a STR operating in our neighborhood, but it's not. Allowed for our homeowners association restrictions, is there some way that we could? Know what the homeowners associations are that restrict them and say we will not issue licenses in those neighborhoods if somebody comes in.
Oh yeah, I thought I addressed this last week, um Karen made a very good practical point that on the application she'll uh put something or whoever has the application. Um, you know, make sure that these SDRs are permitted in your, in your homeowner's association, I do not recommend the city enforcing um covenants and restrictions, putting the burden on the city.
I know, I'm just saying, when somebody comes in and applies for a license, it just gets refused because it's in a subdivision that doesn't allow them.
That's putting the obligation on the city, so.
We're gonna put that obligation on the applicant?
It, of course, the property owner, so, but the city uh practically Karen said she'll put like a bold or she'll ask whoever does.
Okay, anyway, I was just thinking that would eliminate some right away.
But that puts the obligation on city staff and then I would not recommend that.
So what Nina was trying to finish explaining was the suggestion is on the application form, a very clear kind of disclaimer that says you need to get this, you know. It's up to you to deal with your homeowners association and confirm whether or not your covenants would allow such a thing. And we haven't talked language, but may be subject to enforcement by your homeowners association.
Well, we did, we just say. You know, our, our statement already says that you answer truthfully and apply and you meet all these requirements and one is maybe a question that says. Your homeowners, you do not have a homeowners association or a neighborhood covenant that does not allow short term rentals. Yes or no, and as soon as we find out they violated and the answer was inaccurate, then they lose their license. We don't have to enforce anything, it's just they didn't fill out the application correctly, which is a falsifying. Statement that would allow them to be removed from the licensing, so if somebody just brought it to our attention and said, hey, you've got a license and you're not allowed. And we hear about it, we say they falsified their application then and we can disallow the license, that's pretty simple.
We we do have provisions about.
Right.
Falsifying your application.
Right. So that just needs to be on the application.
But Nina and Karen will tell you, and I'll tell you too, we're not gonna get in the business of enforcing covenants.
No, but we don't have to, we just have to disallow licenses when they don't follow our rules.
Right, our rules.
Right, which is check the boxes, you don't have a restriction. Anyway, that that's outside the ordinance, I think it, it'll be um useful to have that. Sorry.
What else, Larry?
I have nothing else I want. They did, you have some changes? Um, I I had, I had no, I had no, no substantive changes, perhaps um. The, in the definition of primary residence, item four could be, item three could be, the second item three could be renumbered as item four, just a typo. That's on page two, two, the various documents, one, two, three and three.
Yeah, see, I think you, I'll change that. Before it goes to council, thanks.
Is it, I don't know if it makes sense to to reword stuff, it's a little awkward, if it's, if it works, just leave it. That's, there's a couple of cases of those.
For whatever it's worth, um I understand um the desire to make things, sure things function and flow and are not overly wordy. Read through this several times and. And I'm not finding a space that where it's like really owner, really onerous, so um speaking as the person who largely needs to deal with a lot of this, I'm I'm reasonably comfortable for whatever that's worth.
That's good. Okay.
Um, would it be useful for Nina to give us a sentence or two right now that we can, that would address? It would, it might be useful for us to incorporate in a motion to adopt the legacy provisions we discussed.
Um Nina, if you need a minute or two, we're happy to let you.
She wants to draft for a moment while, while we're finishing up here. And then we can say exactly what it is we're doing as opposed to a provision that has that general effect.
I prefer to have the wording documented in the minutes of what's gonna be in there and then we can prove it with that word, so if it gets messed up, we've got it. I agree.
So Nina, we're asking you to craft that language.
Sure, I need to find a section, so yeah, um maybe talk to yourself, so there's anything else, cause I just need to write. I I gotta look in the, I gotta copy paste and put like these two sections, that kind of thing, so I just need like two minutes.
Any other discussion points that? Carol, anything else?
Uh only while Nina's doing the the wordsmithing there, I just wanted to make a point that it came up in our last um meeting, uh one of the council members. Um, made a statement after the meeting that, you know, we're not elected officials and can't establish policy. And that is absolutely true, but we have three primary roles as planning commissioners and the number one is recommending changes to zoning and subdivision regulations. So this is very much our sole responsibility, uh but we're making a recommendation to the city council, we are not establishing policy. Uh but our our statutory mandate as a planning commission in Wood- Woodman Park is to review zoning and subdivision regulations. And we, I think we've done yeoman's work on this one, um I'd also like to to brag about this particular commission and exclude myself in in this uh. In this praise, but you've got an attorney, you've got an architect, you've got an engineer, you've got an individual who was the senior planner for the second largest city in Colorado Springs. And you've got a senior planner now for another municipality in uh Teller County. Um, I I think you've got quite a bit of expertise on this, this commission. And I'm very thankful that these men were looking at this ordinance at this time in our history, I think that they're gonna provide a. A a working product that will serve the entire community and I I certainly hope the city council approves of.
I I wanna address something that you just said, and you talked about playing missions, it's not the playing commission's duty or authority to. Offer policy for for the city. And I I believe that was one of the primary reasons why we had three work sessions with the city council. I mean, they weren't dictating to us their policy at that time, they gave us their ideas and concerns and some of the things I thought that could work. And I think we vetted that policy through that process. And I I believe that, you know, we actually have three uh three options before us. One, we can do nothing and continue on with our business license procedure, number two, we could go ahead and ban uh. Short term rentals, or the third option, which we thought we were moving in that direction from what we heard the city, from the city council too. Was to provide some reasonable rules and regulations to control this and make sure it doesn't come out, get out of control with the park. And I believe we don't, we've done that.
Appreciate the comments, needs more time, Nina?
No, I all I did, I I got the sections, I I just wanted to make two comments, um. The motion technically should be two pronged, um and whenever is your, you know, if you wanna do that is. That you approve the ordinance as amended in. Um, maybe in the most recent September twenty fifth draft, because again, it's, it's, it has been amended since what's been, you know, noticed, cause this hearing was, you know, in two parts. And then the second amendment would be um the sentence that you asked me to draft, which is the addition to section seven of the following sentence. The distance restrictions within section five point twenty two point zero twenty L. And eighteen seventy eight fifty B eight shall not apply to current invalid business license holders operating a short term rental business.
Could you read that back again slowly?
The, yes, and the distance restrictions within section five twenty two zero twenty L. And eighteen seventy eight zero fifty B eight shall not apply to current. And valid business license holders operating a short term rental business.
One question, Nina, does it need an additional phrase um that so long is um?
Apply within the first.
So long, so long that that can be maintained, so long as it's renewed on an annual basis.
Yes.
So the reason why I I didn't put that is because that, the only part we're saying doesn't apply is addition restrictions. The entire rest of these regulations apply with whether or not you say it.
And does it apply to all current business owners or goes to current all? Business owners with respect to the same rental, short term rental unit?
Well, I use the same language as the preceding sentence, that current invalid business license holders current, operating a short term rental business. That's what I. But if, I mean, obviously it makes you feel more comfortable, um you know, I'll take what Karen said, I just wanna, I don't wanna overcomplicate things, but if you think that someone's gonna point to that. It's more, cause I'm just saying the distance restrictions don't apply.
He, would you be comfortable, we we have, we have a good base right here, but as Karen and Nina continue to look at that, if they need to tweak it a little bit to make it.
Well, do we need to include a reference to? Tran, it it's not transferable to another property owner, or that's already.
That's already in there, okay.
I think we need to put a time, make sure the time reference is there, cause two years from now, somebody may have a.
So, yeah, sorry, so I had that in parentheses, I wasn't sure if you all want that, so I could say the rest of the sentence could say who apply within two months of the effective date of this ordinance, I think you guys said, is that?
To see that.
Right, so then, do you want me to reread the sentence?
Please.
Look, the distance restrictions within section five twenty two zero twenty L. And eighteen seventy eight zero fifty B eight shall not apply to current invalid business license holders. Operating a short term rental business who apply. Within two months of the effective date of this ordinance, and I'll say who apply for a short term rental business license.
That's good. And does it have to say that they've, it only applied, it does imply if they've applied within two months and have continued to maintain a short term, short term rental business license enforced?
Okay, say that, yeah, that's fine, um and say it again. Cause I'm amending it for this, for the council uh final document.
Have to applied within the two month period.
And.
Has to be for a short, a short, and it's a term, a short term rental business license, I think that was the term.
Yeah, yeah, I put that.
And. It applies to apply to the, be careful, the language means it applies to the same rental unit, not that all their rental units. And like in the short term rental business license must remain to be enforced for the entire time.
And that precludes. Trying to get a license for a new property without.
Yeah, that's one reason.
I think we could use the term renewal of the license as opposed to a new license, if they don't renew it. It expires, then it becomes a new one and it no longer applies, right? So if we just say to their license renewal.
Harry, can you see what you had said a couple of minutes ago for this, that provision, remain in in?
Well, let me, let me kinda talk a little more broadly about it, what I was trying to get to was, there's this provision right now in terms of the transition to the new system. And then going forward in future years, um so long as it's that same owner, that same property, the distance uh requirement did not apply. That so long as they are, that all those things are the same, um that can continue, they sell the property, they let the license lapse. Then they start at ground zero like everybody else was, was what I was thinking, so I don't know how to get there legally.
Well, the only thing is. Now that we have, that they apply within two months. And then this, I can't see any way that this could be read that they can't, that the other, every other part of the, of the regulations don't apply to them.
No, I meant, I meant that this one doesn't apply so long as they keep a renewed active license going forward. No, I meant, I meant that this one doesn't apply so long as they keep a renewed active license going forward.
Renewed active license.
Maybe that's what we're trying to get to. Yeah.
That's the better way to say it than to go into like this, the, you know, every single part, yeah.
Yeah, the other provisions apply. I agree there. So no, it was really about.
No, that's the way I say it.
Yeah.
But again, feel free to continue to tweak. You okay with that, Lee?
I'm not sure what we exactly what we've got, roughly. We do it again slowly.
I think we can get there just a few more minutes.
Yeah.
And then we'll just approve it, that that wording and this, if she makes her presentation to city council, she can say, and this is the wording, but I'd like to offer some options. If they want to tweak it, they can do it with the city council.
Yeah, well, if if in anything that's in here, if we find upon upon review, Karen, you find it, Nina finds it, one of us finds it calling attention to, oops, we didn't mean it to say that way. In making a presentation can indicate, you know, it appears there may have been some confusion on a certain paragraph and the following wording might reflect better the intent. So I mean, yeah, because the chance of the city council adopting identically what we provide to them is is not high.
I feel like we worked on it to to provide them.
We've given them something that could do it, but they'll surely they'll have some, some other.
I don't know that they will.
So are we?
So.
Agreeable on?
Yeah, I think if she reads it back to us one more time.
Okay, I'm so.
Slowly, please.
The distance restrictions within section five twenty-two zero twenty L and eighteen seventy-eight oh fifty B eight shall not apply to current invalid business license holders operating a short-term rental business. Put a pin, I'll get back to Lee's point, who apply for a short-term rental business license within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. And whose license remains active. Is that the best way to say it? And who maintains a renewed active license. And period. And the pin is the unit, which I know, Lee, I'm trying to figure out how to say for the actually.
Take, take a minute and take a minute and get comfortable with wording. Don't. I think one of the concerns is if the existing property gets a new license, a year from now they have to renew it. But we want to make sure that the renewal can continue, even though it doesn't.
Doesn't necessarily need the.
So maybe we need to take that two months out of that clause after all. So that would be.
Yeah.
If you have a current and active license, you can renew.
Okay, Nina, I think I know how to help this. I would start the sentence a little differently. This says provided a was it a a business license holder, a current without invalid license, applies within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. The distance restrictions in those sections shall not apply to the new license and future renewal or subsequent renewals. So long as that license holder.
Remains active.
Yeah, either where I'm going.
Yeah, but then it's still, I'm trying to the concern of the property, but right a current. I think that's, yeah, I think that actually is a better way even to even to relate to the unit. Because if they are not a current, if they don't fall under this, it was in the two months that you, it's not, they can't apply for different units. So this is a new sentence, provided a current invalid business license holder operating a short-term rental business applies within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. The distance restrictions within section A and B, we already know what they are, shall not apply. Oh, now I wait, sorry, I have the same sentence.
To the new license and subsequent renewals of same license.
The new short-term rental business license and subsequent renewals.
Of the same license. Or for the same property.
Who maintain, you still want me to say that who maintain a renewed active license? No, we already said renewed, who maintain.
So not apply to renewals of the same of the license or the same license for the same property.
Okay, so period. Okay, because then you guys. Okay, so provide a current invalid business license holder operating a short-term rental business applies within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. The distance restrictions within these two sections shall not apply to new short-term rental business license and subsequent renewals for the same license and property.
Maybe that was way too fast for me, though. Somebody's got it and wants to make a motion. Do I don't have.
I think the language is there, Nina, it was.
I am, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I always.
Describe it.
Okay, yeah, I might, I might change a few words. I don't think that would go.
Email it to me.
What'd you say?
We can look at it.
Do you want to, if it's in a word document, I don't know if you want to show your screen.
Oh, you guys are being serious. No, okay, I thought, okay. I thought you would, okay. So provided a current invalid business license holder operating.
That's just, you just changed it. Maybe this is provider of a holder of a current valid business license, but so go slowly, whatever you want to do.
Provided a current invalid business license holder.
Okay, hold that, hold that, provided a current and valid business, just really slowly, Nina, I'm trying to try and type and print this for Lee.
I'm just gonna second it.
Provided a current invalid business license holder operating a short-term rental business.
Hang on.
Okay, applies within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. Hang on. Okay, the distance restrictions within section five, period two-two, period zero-two-zero L and eighteen, period seven-eight, period zero-five-zero subsection B eight shall not apply.
Okay.
To new short-term rental business license applications and subsequent renewals.
Shall not apply to new.
I think that's what you guys wanted, new short-term rental business license applications.
Okay.
And subsequent renewals for the same property.
Okay. Seriously, I have to spell check this thing.
Can I read that back to you? An added sentence to section seven would say, provided a current invalid business license holder operating a short-term rental business applies within two months of the effective date of this ordinance, comma, the distance restrictions in sections five dot twenty-two dot twenty dot L and section eighteen dot seventy-eight dot fifty dot C dot A.
B is in the way.
B eight.
B eight, thank you. Shall not apply to new short-term rental license, business license applications and subsequent renewals for the same property. Close?
Yeah, that was what I said, but.
Back in your initial proviso, you're referring to the short-term rental business license holder applies, applies for what? And we know what we're going to say.
Plays for a short.
A short, a short, a short, a short-term rental business license. Or. Isn't that the short-term rental business license all caps in ways been written in this document, it's been caps?
Yeah, I'm right, I'm writing it because I'm fixing the evidence.
All right, let me read it again, so you follow what I added.
And then anybody stop, Ken.
Use the entire way through smoothly.
Yep, okay. Added sentence to section seven after the first sentence says, provided a current and valid business license holder operating a short-term rental business applies for a short-term rental business license. Get that corrected. Within two months of the effective date of this ordinance, I spelled that wrong. The distance restrictions in section five dot twenty-two dot oh twenty dot L and section eighteen dot seventy-eight dot oh fifty dot B dot eight shall not apply to the new short-term rental business license application and subsequent renewals for the same property.
That's getting, that's getting pretty close, by the way, and the in the numbering, it's five point twenty-two and oh two oh, isn't it? Perennel and eighteen seventy-four, perenn B, perenn eight.
Could be, I think it is.
Yeah, that's what I put in the ordinance. I don't think it needs to be in the motion language, though. I have the correct, I'm correcting. You guys could just direct, yeah, I have been in the draft that I'm sending.
Perenn B, perenn eight on the second one and perenn L on the first one. Yeah, fair enough. It's a paragraph.
By the way, since you're the emanuance and have the document, you're going to make the motion.
I know, that's why I was writing. So somebody could make a motion.
Only place I might have a concern is subsequent renewals, does it have to be consecutive? You know, it's not, can't have a.
If it's a gap, it's not going to be a renewal.
Can't be renew, yeah.
Okay, wouldn't qualify as a renewal.
Yeah, I remember we're renewing annually.
So if they fail to renew, then they come in for a new short-term rental license, all.
Agreed.
All the paragraphs apply only to renewals after subsequent renewals only.
Thanks. I think that works too, and it's clear enough that 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 applies to the same.
For the same property.
It's the same property for the same same, same unit.
Different owner can't get a renewal on another license or non-registered.
He's talking about if the same owner comes in with a different unit.
For the same short-term rental unit, probably.
Yeah, well, it would.
As opposed to the same property.
Same unit.
Maybe, maybe it's not necessary.
I could just say the same short-term rental unit.
Yep.
Be more specific.
Yeah.
The same short-term rental unit. I'm going to charge lawyer fees for this, Nina.
Guys didn't need to.
I didn't bring my PC today. I wonder why.
I can type it faster than I can write it with a pencil.
So have we resolved section seven? We're in agreement to.
I think so.
Is there anything else?
Other than the typo and the definition of primary residence, did anybody have any corrections? I must feel happy I found one type of. What's the data, the ordinance that we are looking at tonight that we want to reference?
September twenty-fifth.
Nine twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-two.
But on the bottom is, yeah, you're right.
I'm just looking for how to make your motion.
So you think we should make the motion to add the amendment first or the approve the draft first?
I would make one motion approving the ordinance as amended in the September twenty-fifth draft as published on the website and with the following amendment and then the section seven thing.
Okay. You guys ready? All right, first, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city woodland park ordinance draft dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two regarding short-term rentals for the city woodland park as provided at the meeting.
And as further mended.
And it's amended in section seven. Do you want me to go ahead and include the amendment?
Do you?
Okay, to add a sentence to section seven stating provided a current and valid business license holder operating a short-term rental business applies for a short-term rental business license within two months of the effective date of this ordinance, comma, the distance restrictions in section five dot twenty-two oh twenty perenn L, close perenn, and section eighteen dot seventy-eight dot zero fifty, print C B, close parentheses, parentheses eight, close parentheses, shall not apply to the new short-term rental business license application and subsequent renewals for the same short-term rental unit.
And and you also want to just say, and the typo, the definition of primary residence.
That doesn't necessarily need to be in a motion.
Schrader's error, we got.
Yeah, I already have that. Yeah, thanks.
We have a motion, we're looking for a second.
Well, second.
Very, very good, Carol.
Any discussion?
Further discussion?
I would like to address Jerry and Tom, they were sitting out here and listening to us hack one this. But Jerry, when you first came to us over a year ago and said, this is a problem and this is an issue and we need to take care of it. I believe we've done that. I know we haven't gone all the way that you wanted us to see and ban short-term rentals. But I think politically, maybe socially too, that we probably couldn't have done that. But I think what we've done, we've included provisions within this ordinance that will appear as a code that will protect neighborhoods and integrity in their character. I firmly believe that. So I wanted to say thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Further discussion? So, Karen, if we vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
And Chair Hartsfield?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
This will go to council.
Right now, the estimated schedule would be first reading on October twentieth and public hearing on November third. But none of that's been officially noticed or reading, but right now that's what staff's anticipating.
What was the, assuming before I got here, they did extend the moratorium?
They did first reading for the, an ordinance to extend the moratorium this evening at five thirty. And then the public hearing on that ordinance will be next Thursday, October sixth.
And what was the date, the proposed extension?
December sixteenth.
Thank you, Nina.
I'm sorry, which?
December sixteenth.
And when is the current moratorium?
October.
October fifteenth.
Yeah, there's no.
October fifteenth, yeah.
Okay.
So this for two months.
Thank you, Nina, for your assistance. Thank you, Karen, for your assistance.
No, thanks.
Fellow commissioners for working through this with us. I enjoyed the process. It was challenging but fun.
We've learned an awful lot from you, Ken. Thank you very much. You're a very helpful, healthy addition to our commission.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you so much.
Nothing else on the agenda, Karen? Do you have any reports?
I'm just going to note, we have no business scheduled for October thirteenth. So, and we didn't continue anything tonight. Thank you. So you have more than earned a night off. So looking at no meeting for your next regular scheduled time on October thirteenth. And then I just wanted to note that Dave was not able to be with us this evening, so we had somebody else driving the AV. So this is Sarah Mitten, our deputy city clerk, who has been filling in for him this evening. So we just appreciate her being able to support us tonight.
Thank you.
So that's all I had.
For the comments or issues, the mission?
Oh, thank you for all your work.
Let's eight oh three, we're being during.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Nina. Have a good night.